The Chair of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach Public Schools, and I hereby call this special meeting to order at 5:00 PM on the 7th day of March, 2023. In accordance with the schedule of school board meetings approved by the school board at their January 10th, 2023 organizational regular meeting and pursuant to bylaw 1-46 and Virginia Code 2.2-3707, the school board will hold a special meeting on Tuesday, March 7th, 2023 at 5:00 PM at the Holland Road Annex, 2323 Holland Road, Virginia Beach, Virginia, 23453 in the Einstein Lab. The purpose of this special meeting is for the school board to discuss and take action on the one, schools operating budget for fiscal year 2023-24, and two, capital improvement program, the CIP, fiscal year 2023-24 through fiscal year 2028-29. Members of the public will be able to observe the special school board meeting through live streaming on schoolboard.vbschools.com/meetings/live, broadcast on VBTV, Channel 47, and on Zoom. Thank you to those that have joined us in person and online. Tonight, we will have several school board members participating remotely. When the clerk announces a school board member who is participating in the meeting, that school board member will state the reason that the school board member is participating remotely, whether it be personal or medical. If a school board member is participating remotely due to personal reasons, the school board member will need to state the reason and the location from where the school board member is participating. Madam Clerk, will you please announce those school board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the Holland Road Annex Einstein Lab is Chair Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Brown, Mr. Callen, Ms. Franklin, and Ms. Martin. And attending via Zoom is Ms. Melnick. Please state your reason and location. Ms. Melnick, can you hear us? Ms. Melnick, we'll come back to you. Ms. Manning, can you state your reason and location? Okay, Madam Chair, we're just gonna take a moment. We have technical difficulties.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name, reason, and location.
This is Kim Melnick. This is a personal reason. I am watching my son play college baseball in Charleston, South Carolina.
Thank you, Ms. Melnick. Ms. Manning, please state your reason and location.
This is Vicki Manning. It's for personal reasons. I'm on vacation in Florida.
Thank you. Ms. Owens, can you state your reason and location?
Yeah, this is Jessica Owens. I am on personal. I am in Joint Base Pearl Harbor-Hickam in beautiful Honolulu, Hawaii, and I am accompanying my husband on a military trip.
Thank you. And Mr. Culpepper, please state your reason and location.
Good afternoon, this is David Culpepper. I'm on travel for work. I'm in Portland, Oregon.
Thank you. And that is our role, Madam Chair.
Thank you. You should have seen all the faces, you guys, when you said where you were, especially you, Jessica Owens in Hawaii. All right, so we're gonna have a moment of silence, and then we'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the adoption of the agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda as presented? Hearing none, I call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Ms. Anderson, and seconded by Ms. Stacy Martin. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I call for a vote to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, please raise your hands.
Ms. Melnick, how do you vote? Ms. Melnick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Owens, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you. Mr. Culpepper, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. And Ms. Manning, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have unanimous vote. The motion did pass.
Okay, thank you. Now, we're gonna go to the action four on the agenda. This is the resolution regarding school operating budget for the fiscal year 2023-24. I call for a motion to approve the resolution regarding school operating budget for the fiscal year 2023-24. Ms. Franklin, and seconded by Mrs. Brown. Is there any discussion? We will in a minute, yeah. Any discussion first? Okay, Ms. Brown. This is, yeah. This is the time if you want to say something, because after the discussion, we will take the vote and move on, okay? So if anybody wants to say why they're, you know, something about it, this is the time.
So I am happy to be here today and vote in favor of a budget that's going to do so much to support the individuals within our school, doing the important work every day that benefits the education of about 65,000 students in our division. Very happy about the aggressive pay increases that will bring our employees up to market value in our area. And I just want to mention the positives I see in the budget that I'm going to support it for. Going forward with the step pay issue, instructional staff is going to see that corrected. There will be a 1.5% increase in between the steps now, so I'm happy to fix that and play a role in supporting it. Additionally, I support the new pay scale for professional level two that impacts BIS, school psychologists, OTs, PTs, and school social workers. I believe this will help attract quality employees to positions that are important for the division, and even small staffing shortages in these positions have the potential to pose major disruptions to the quality of education for our students. So hopefully, this will also help support our special needs community. I'm also happy that our lowest paid workers, bus drivers assistants, cafeterias assistants, custodians, will see a pay increase and a move to U5 to U7, with all positions seeing a positive pay increase. Is the budget perfect? No. But when we look at the budget, I wanna look at the whole entire picture, and I think this moves our division in a very positive direction. At this point, I'd like to advocate for my personal future wish lists. I would like to see our lowest paid workers get more aggressive pay increases in future budgets. When I pulled in, there was a sign that said, "Now hiring food service workers and custodians." I'm not really 100% sure that we're going to get where we need to go with this particular budget there, but I'm happy to move in the right direction. And I think Continued Wellness Days, I think we already discussed that, I would like to advocate for those. I think those do a good job for our employees in our districts to make sure they feel valued. I would also like to see in future budgets a reevaluation of top-level administration positions to remove any duplicity and reallocate funding to budget items that will benefit the education of our students in the schools. Again, I'm happy to be here and support this budget and work to support the education of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Is there anybody else? Okay, I just wanna say I'm thrilled for this budget, and I thank the staff, administrative staff, for working so diligently and hard, answering all the questions that you did for all of us and for the public, our employees, and that you are taking the advice of our compensation study and moving forward with it. Thank you very, very much. I think this is a great budget. I'm thrilled, so. All right, we're gonna move to the vote. Oh, is there somebody? Yeah, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, I'm gonna say it. Yeah, we're gonna read the resolution before we vote. And Mrs. Anderson, who is the Chair of the PPM, will be reading that resolution. After she reads the resolution, then we will have our vote, okay? All right.
Thank you. Whereas, the mission of Virginia Beach City Public Schools, in partnership with the entire community, is to empower every student to become a lifelong learner who is a responsible, productive, and engaged citizen within the global community. And whereas, the school board of the City of Virginia Beach has adopted a comprehensive strategic plan and school improvement priorities to guide budgetary decisions. And whereas, the school board has studied the proposed fiscal year 2023-24 operating budget in view of state and federal requirements, the strategic plan, priorities, community expectations, competitive compensation for employees, and the best educational interests of its students. And whereas, the proposed fiscal year 2023-24 operating budget adjusts the instructional experience-based step pay scale to provide a 1.5% between each step consistently throughout the structure without adjusting the entry rate, and adds an experienced step for all eligible employees on the scale, per the recommendation of the division's compensation study consultants. And whereas, the proposed fiscal year 2023-24 operating budget adjusts the unified experience-based step pay scale to provide a 1% adjustment for pay grades 0 to 14, and a 1.5% adjustment for pay grades 15 and above, and adds an experienced step for all eligible employees on the scale, per the recommendation of the division's compensation study consultants. And whereas, the proposed fiscal year 2023 operating budget establishes a new pay grade on the unified experience-based step pay scale, professional level two for behavior intervention specialists, school psychologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists, and school social workers, per the recommendation of the division's compensation study consultants. And whereas, the proposed fiscal year 2023-24 operating budget upgrades identified positions currently on pay grade five of the unified experience-based step pay scale, which includes bus assistants, cafeteria assistants, custodian one, and fleet shop helper to pay grade seven, which is closer to meeting the $15 Virginia minimum wage requirement by the year 2026, and realigns other positions impacted by said move, per the recommendation of the division's compensation study consultants. And whereas, the city school revenue sharing policy provides 46.75% of certain general fund revenues to meet obligations of the school board of the City of Virginia Beach. And whereas, the total funds requested for the fiscal year 2023-24 operating budget from the City of Virginia Beach to the school board of the City of Virginia Beach are $512,950,115. And whereas, the debt service payment is estimated to be $50,071,611, leaving a balance of $462,878,504 to allocate between the operating budget and the capital improvement program, the CIP. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the $462,878,504 be allocated as follows. $460,878,504 to the fiscal year 2023-2024 operating budget, and $2 million to schools pay-as-you-go, pay-go for the CIP. And be it further resolved that the federal funds of $13,500,000, state funds of $451,994,592, and other local funds of $3,968,341 be added to the fiscal year 2023-24 operating budget, bringing it to a total of $930,341,437. And be it further resolved that the $333,591 of the school reserve special revenue fund be added to the fiscal year 2023-24 operating budget, bringing the total to $930,675,028. And be it further resolved that the school board of the City of Virginia Beach requests a lump sum appropriation of $930,675,028 from the City Council of Virginia Beach for the school board fiscal 2023-24 operating budget. And be it further resolved that the school board of the City of Virginia Beach requests an appropriation of $208,666,87 for categorical grants and other special revenue funds comprised of categorical grants in the amount of $142,411,540, Green Run Collegiate in the amount of $4,363,929, and other special revenue funds in the amount of $61,890,618. And be it further resolved that the school board of the City of Virginia Beach requests a lump sum appropriation of $1,139,341,115 for the total of all funds, and that includes $930,675,228 for the operating budget, plus $208,666,87 for categorical grants and other special revenue funds. And be it finally resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this school board, and the clerk of the school board is directed to deliver a copy of this resolution to the mayor, each member of the city council, the city manager, and the city clerk. Adopted this, adopted by the school board of the City of Virginia Beach this 7th day of March, 2023.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Without further discussion, please, I'm going to read for our vote to approve the resolution regarding school operating budget for fiscal year 2023-24 as presented. All in favor, please raise your hands.
Ms. Melnick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Manning, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Owens, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Culpepper, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote. The motion did pass.
Wonderful, thank you. B, resolution regarding the capital improvement program, the CIP, for the fiscal year 2023-24 through fiscal year 2028-29. I call for a motion to approve the resolution regarding the capital improvement program, the CIP, for fiscal year 2023-24 through fiscal year 2028-29. Do I have a motion? Ms. Stacy Martin, and seconded by Ms. Jennifer Franklin. Is there any discussion? Mr. Callen?
There are a lot of numbers, and there are a lot of moving parts. And as one seeks to get one's hands wrapped around all these moving parts, occasionally you'll overlook something, or occasionally you'll reinterpret something. So I'm looking for guidance. On a handout that was dated February 7th of this year, entitled "The Superintendent's Estiment of Needs and the Capital Improvement Program," with the corresponding dates. On slide number 27, it makes reference to the costs associated with the repairs or the replacements for Prince's Anne High School, Betty F. Williams, and Bayside High School. On that page, in slide number 27, it provides specific dollar amounts. Prince's Anne High School, $162,650,000. For Betty F. Williams, $68,387,500. And for Bayside High School replacement, $197,000, excuse me, $197,700,000. Bringing the total to $428,737,500. On the very next page, on slide 29, it gives significantly different numbers. And so it may be my misunderstanding, but it leads to confusion that I'm seeking for clarification on. And so there are different numbers, and if I put them side by side, they read as follows. And here's where it can get to where your eyes can glaze over with all these numbers being read, and I understand that, and that's not my intent. My intent is clarification. So here's where we go. Prince's Anne High School replacement, according to slide 27, suggests that the cost associated with that is $162,650,000. Yet on the next page, in slide 29, it says to do so will require $247,176,536. A rather sizable difference from one page to the next, same time period. I'll keep going until I get to a bottom line. Betty F. Williams, on slide 27, suggests that the fees associated with that replacement would be $68,387,500, and yet on the next page, it goes to $81,845,143. And then in conclusion, Bayside High School, on slide 27, shows the $197,700,000 fee, and the very next page, it's $385,885,854. The total on the new list of numbers takes the previous list from $428,737,500 to $714,000. The difference is $285,000 and some change, and I know that's easy to say when you're talking about millions of dollars, but I don't mean that flippantly. And the difference between the two, as I do the math, is a 66.5% difference between slide 27 and slide 29. What am I missing? Because it strikes me as two separate worlds, and I'm trying to put them all into one logically conclusive world.
Yeah, so apparently, we have been completely ineffective in explaining those, because that was the goal of the CIP process for this year. So without having any, I would love to have slides to be able to support that exact question, because that goes back to essentially the original presentation that we gave for this. And without seeing what you have in front of you, I think that's what we were trying to explain in the two different slides, because you said it went from one slide that essentially had the numbers, and this is the currently approved CIP, what commonly referred to as last year's CIP, which has Prince's Anne High School at 162.7, that's in millions, Betty F. Williams, Bayside Six, at 68.4, and Bayside High School at 197.7, which roughly matches up to the first slide that you mentioned. So then you said on the very next slide, which is, and now I'm gonna reference the CIP that's in front of you for approval, the numbers for Prince's Anne High School are $247.2,81,900,000 and $385,000,000. So what we were trying to explain as we went through this is the significance of inflation and the updated inflation numbers that we were able to contract out over the course of this year to put more concrete, well, factually based numbers to what the impact of inflation was and is. So if you remember, we started off with the slide that showed inflation in a visual format, where it had a dashed line that visually represented about 5.4% inflation, which is what was historically used for a period of time. And then several years ago, we put in the curved line that acknowledged that, well, hey, it's actually more steep than that in recent years. And there was a projection for Prince's Anne High School, so this was pre-pandemic, and by memory, I think that number was $450 a square foot that were projected for Prince's Anne High School. What we're trying to share is, pre-pandemic, before this inflation that we've seen recently, we projected that number, and it was a shocking number for the elected body at that time. It was hard to fathom that we would have to spend $450 a square foot in the foreseeable future for that. So now that the inflationary numbers are stabilizing, we had an opportunity to contract out the inflation percentages. That's the information that you guys have received in several briefs, including the, an email that went out to the school board recently that updated that slide again, where it showed the substantial amount of inflation. And again, these numbers are based on roughly 2019 numbers, that we had that significant increase in inflation that would have been inappropriate to try and nail down during the course of previous CIPs. So this year, we had the opportunity, and you saw the three years that, coming out of that, that it was pretty substantial inflation. One of the numbers was up to 15%, and then it gradually was calculated to come down over time until it stabilized at about 6.18 was the projection. So the difference in the number, which is the basis of your question, is these numbers and the currently approved CIP, so last year's CIP, was based on essentially what the best information that was available at the time when we developed. This year, we were able to contract out and get better numbers related to inflation, and then these are the results of the inflation numbers. So the significance of, so Prince's Anne High School is the next one in line. So there's already substantial impact when you're jumping up to a projection of about $575 a square foot, when you get to a building that size, and that is not within anybody's control in this room. That is just the result of inflation, and it is not within, not controllable from a body like this. So that's the, why Prince's Anne High School is the number that it is. Betty F. shortly behind it, so that number is gonna be based on when that project can be bid and completed. Now, the challenge that then comes in is we are 60 million is what we have in the CIP to be funded each year. That number is not going up. So inflation has been going up, and that's, this goes back to the slide that we shared before. So it's not just the fact that $60 million isn't going up right now, it's that it hasn't gone up since the late 2000s. We were funded at $60 million a year in the late 2000s. It dipped in the teens, and now we're back up to $60 million a year of funding. So we have essentially two decades where we have not increased the funding at all, and during those two decades, inflation continues to go up. So what that means is, is when you only fund for $60 million, and that's all that we can plan for right now, it has to push projects out further. So why the number for the last school in the line, Bayside High School, which is a high school, now that's on the order of, I'm not looking at the chart, $900-plus dollars per square foot, because we have to wait until you can get enough money that's in the system, in the CIP, so that you can actually then go out to bid and then build that project. So the longer you wait, the more cost per square foot, the more the cost goes up for those buildings. So I didn't do a great job, I would love to have visuals to be able to explain that, but that's the kind of domino effect that is related to when you get good numbers related to inflation and what the consequences are.
So the 66.54% difference between these two slides is not a difference between one year's calculation and the next as it relates to immediate costs. These are the projected costs into the future and taking the effects of inflation over that extended period of time.
Yes, and the power of compounding. So much like we talk about those from an investment standpoint, it's beautiful when you have higher numbers and your, your money makes more money over time, it's a similar consequence when it comes to inflation. And it's the compounding effect of it over time.
Okay, let me see if I can quickly segue to question number two, and I'm not sure I'll be able to do so, but at the end of this, you have this funding summary. Alternative B is what it's shown as. And it seems as though a column that will be of interest to us tonight will be the six-year appropriation column. And I'm again looking at this piece that was just handed out in February of this year, and then comparing that to tonight's handout at the back of the attachment that I've received. The difference once again just causes me to furrow my brow, which is easily done these days. But I look at the handout that was given last month, and at the bottom of the page, under the six-year appropriations column, the number is six hundred and ninety-five million and some change. Again, I don't mean that flippantly at all. On tonight's handout, that same column has gone from six hundred and ninety-five to seven hundred and thirty-five million. And so that just causes me to say, it was only a month ago. Surely I must be missing something. Can you help me connect the dots?
So I'm, so the book that I have, quite honestly, has six hundred and ninety-five in it. So I'm going to bring Melissa up to be able to cover that one.
Okay.
So, good afternoon, Mr. Callen, good afternoon, board. So as you could see, alternative A is the one where you're seeing the seven hundred and thirty-five million, and alternative B is the one where you're seeing the six hundred and ninety-five million. What you'll also see on alternative B is year one is down to fifty-one point eight million dollars. So alternative B, as it's noted here, both alternatives to date do not include twenty-three, twenty-four reversion funds, not get approved by city council. That's alternative B. That has reversion funding that was approved February 21st by city council. So we're no longer considering alternative B, but that's the reason that the number both for year one and the six-year appropriations is much lower, because that included reversion funding, which is equal to cash from last year's budget cycle that the city council approved to be appropriated to the CIP as the school board had asked.
So the reversion funding was the only differential?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Callen. Ms. Franklin.
And thank you for that additional explanation. And I think what further complicates and confuses is that not only do we have our numbers based on design bid build, but then we also have the PPA factor, right? Which of course, most of us know that city council will be reviewing tonight. So I think that that is what further complicates and confuses is because we have very different set of numbers. So I've had a lot of people ask, and I'm going to present it to you all, what happens when city council reviews it? Let's just say that they agree and approve with our resolution. So what happens to these numbers at that point? And then I have another question after that.
So these numbers in the CIP, based on a vote from city council tonight, don't change.
Okay.
And here's why. What is in front of city council tonight is a agreement to enter into an interim agreement, which then allows a design process to occur and ultimately to develop a comprehensive agreement, which would include a guaranteed maximum price. It's essentially a quote for these three schools to be packaged uniquely. So that's the PPA piece. I'm going to pause there. The CIP that's in front of you is based on building individual buildings moving forward. And we traditionally do that in a design bid build kind of way. So we must, when you're planning for individual buildings, plan for a plan to build individual buildings. And this is the plan to build those individual buildings. But it's, it's interesting the way that question comes out, because that's part of the benefit, well, it's the benefit of the PPA is to be packaged in a way that could potentially see, and we used to say, tens of millions of dollars in savings, but that over time now, with better data, could potentially be more than a hundred million dollars in offset of cost for the taxpayers. So if the, if we get to a comprehensive agreement, and it looks beneficial in all of the things that we've talked about, which includes funding, which includes debt service, everything related to the PPA, if it looks promising and that there's agreement with our staff, city staff, then we could potentially come to you with a recommendation and say, here's the quote for these three buildings. And if you were in agreement with that recommendation, then it would go to council. And only then, if they were to approve that, would we then enter into that process where we would build those three schools under that. At that point in time, there would be a guaranteed maximum price, and we would have the quote. So at that point in time, we would then look to, how do we make our CIP numbers and the funding reflect what that, that is? Until we get to a, and I'm not saying that we will ever get there based on the recommendation, but if we, until that city council being the last step in the process to approve it, we have to stay, have a path to be able to get to building individual buildings, which is what this is.
Correct. So this CIP is based on us sticking with the design bid build for individual schools. And so this could, these numbers could improve based on any interim agreement that is acceptable to both this board and city council. And you guys could come back to us and say, we have some great news. This is what the new proposal looks like. And, and, and so basically, we're kind of voting tonight on worst case scenario. Because the, on, on, in addition to that, the PPA could have a really good cascading effect in the future, that it could actually save us many more millions of dollars because of the plans and designs, you know, having the model for Bayside. So, so basically, this is essentially worst case scenario, sticking with the design bid build, not playing into the factor of PPA getting approved at all. And if that happens, then we could actually have a really good, positive savings in terms of getting some additional numbers once the interim agreement is approved.
Yes, and if I may, only one small adjustment. Rather than worst case scenario, I would say, this is how we do buildings. This is, this is the standard. So we're briefing you on the standard.
Yes.
The exception is that we have a PPA that might have cost benefit to go with it.
Yeah. So, but, but I'm just saying that, that it could get better.
If the, for the PPA. So, so yes, I'm glad you said that. So the PPA could potentially have benefits, and these are based on current projections.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Conditions change year in and year out.
Sure.
Could get better. I don't want to create that.
It could, yeah.
Sense of, we, we love hope, but we need to plan for the best numbers that we have, but it also could potentially get worse. You don't know. But that's why you update your numbers every year and go with the best facts that you have available at the time to make a decision.
But I just wanted to make sure that people understood, and, you know, and I understood as well, the, the impact of what PPA could actually provide to us in the future, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Franklin. Mr. Culpepper.
Thank you so much. Excuse me. Hey, first off, I just wanted to thank Mr. Freeman and everybody who puts so much work into the, the CIP and the PPA. There's a lot of good data in there. And Mr. Freeman and I talked earlier today, and I, you know, and I think I said last week too, that some of these numbers I don't have a lot of faith in. And while there's some truth to that, it's only because, you know, there are a whole lot of assumptions to go into how this, that was developed, these were developed. And Jack has made a very good point of restating, if that's the best information we have, he's going forward with, and I appreciate, appreciate that effort. But there are, there are obviously a couple of things that concern me. And Mr. Callen brought up part of it earlier, so I'm looking at the, the school board funding summary, so it's the last page on today's agenda, the school board funding summary of Virginia Beach SC public schools, potential proposal March 7, 2023, alternative A. And the, the gap between the total projected cost there and six-year appropriations is a, is significant, it's three hundred and fifty-six million dollars. And all of that gap is based on the Bayside High School replacement program. Every other project there is, is funded in the six-year appropriation, except for that one. Did I state that accurately, Mr. Freeman?
I believe so, yes. And when I say I believe so, what I mean by that is that the math between the total project cost for Bayside and what falls out of the six-year CIP, I trust you that that was the number that you said.
Yeah, sorry. I said that fast and I don't have the cabinet in front of you. Just wanted to make sure I'm not saying something wrong. And, you know, where that comes into play is actually out there at year seven and beyond is where, you know, you start having to pay the bill on that project. You know, the other thing that goes in the same vein with that is, I apologize if you don't have in front of you, but looking at the, this year's CIP proposal on page 14 in the last block, it talks about, you know, what our, our longer distance plan looks like for school replacements and modernization. And you can, if you, if you're able to pull that up, you can see that the, the first line on the chart, looking at a school is going to be ninety-one years old when we get to take action on it. Down to the bottom, it's just steadily increasing up to, we're looking at schools for almost one hundred and forty years old before we're able to, to replace them. So that is telling me that we have a, frankly, an unsustainable trend going here. We're looking at an inability to keep up with modernization. And while on one hand, we could simply say that is a function of inflation juxtaposed against decreasing revenue. And that's certainly the case. But like somebody said earlier, hope is not a plan in terms of fixing that problem. And the only thing that we can truly control in this process is living within our means and not reaching out to the taxpayer for more money, but rather looking at our budget and living within our budget. And, and while I certainly appreciate that, you know, with these, I should backtrack one step for a second here and say that when we look at the CIP, you know, there are dozens and dozens of projects in the CIP, and we're not going to talk about it, any of, any of them but three. Right? So there's really only three projects you're really concerned about, and they're the, the big high dollar item. Ms. Franklin made a great points about, and you have earlier as well, Mr. Freeman, about the, the CIP, the projected nature of it, as it goes to design bid build and how that's separate from the PPA. And I certainly understand that. But part of what's baked into the CIP is the size and scope of those projects as well as the cost. Now, we talked, we talked about the fact that these projects aren't approved to go forward simply because we approve the CIP, that we will revisit those projects. And we've already agreed, for example, that we will revisit the scope of each one of these projects, the size of those schools, which I think is not only good but necessary. But I'm really not comfortable that that's enough. I really feel like the CIP needs to reflect a sincere effort on our part to live within our means, and that we need to look at, well, frankly, more conservative costs for each one of these projects. And the only numbers I can hang my hat on are the, the numbers that are assigned to the PPA. Well, I understand that's not design bid build. There are certainly numbers you can still live with then if you had a design bid build, if we need to. And more importantly, even though it does not, even if we go back to these numbers in the PPA, is Mr. Freeman referred to it there to go with, it's last year's CIP, you still can't, you still don't close that, that gap between total projected costs and the six-year appropriations. So I'm going to bring it down to a seventy million dollar shortfall. And that shortfall somewhere along the line equates to debt, or taxes, or both. So I'd like to make a, a resolution, excuse me, a motion to substitute last year's CIP data for those three specific projects into this year's CIP. I'm happy to continue discussion.
You can.
This is Vicky Manning. I'll second that motion.
State your motion again, please, Mr. Culpepper.
Yeah, my motion is to assist, substitute for these three projects, Prince's and High School, Betty F. Williams, and Bayside High School. The numbers contained within last year's CIP into this year's CIP.
Can you state those numbers for us, please?
Sure. The, I'll just get the total costs and, sir, rather than list them all. For Prince's and, these are the same numbers, by the way, that Mr. Callen listed a moment ago. For Prince's and, one hundred and sixty-two million, six hundred and fifty thousand, even. For Betty F. Williams, sixty-eight million, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred. And for Bayside, one hundred and ninety-seven million, seven hundred thousand.
So we have a motion by Mr. Culpepper to go back to last year's CIP quote for the three schools. Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, and we have a second by Mrs. Manning. Discussion. Would you like to say?
I'm happy to start, I'm happy to start discussion.
You're happy to start this discussion? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, there, I'll give, I'll make three points here to start off. If, the first one, perhaps is the most significant in my mind, is that it actually won't change the budget, the, the CIP budget resolution as it's drafted. The CIP budget resolution, you know, which is two pages above that chart I just referenced in today's agenda, brings it down to a bottom line of, that we resolved to, to budget seven hundred and thirty-five million, four hundred and twenty-six thousand, sixty-one dollars to the CIP for 2023-24. And that number won't change. All that will change is the, the delta between the total projected cost of all the projects in that CIP and the six-year appropriation. Moreover, in, Mr. Freeman, you can, you can check me here if I, if I say this incorrectly. Moreover, it doesn't change any of the, the planned appropriations over the next six years. It starts to change it in, in year seven. Because we will be able to still completely fund Prince's and, Betty F. Williams, but then the gap in Bayside will close significantly based on that. Now, I'm not in the illusion that, that you get something for nothing, that we can build schools without paying for them. But I think it's important that we at least start this discussion from a fiscal constraint that matches our ability to actually fund the projects. Also, it also doesn't change the requirement for us to review and approve these projects in the future as a, as an entirety, not only as a, the school staff, but for the, for the school board. But it gives us a place to start from, which I find, like I said, more responsible in taxpayer dollars. And that, I think those are three big points I wanted to make there.
Any other discussions, Mr., you have your mic on, Mr. Freeman. Do you want to say anything?
I'm waiting to do as I'm directed. I know that this is a school board motion, and when you ask me to share information, I will.
Okay, Ms. Wayne, Ms. Franklin, and then Ms. Williams? Okay.
Mr. Freeman, I, I would like to know, is that a possibility to, assuming that we don't, or not assuming, or not taking into account the PPA vote, is that a realistic motion for us to move forward under the design bid build model?
My sense is no. And here's, here's the challenge. If we as a staff had proposed a recommendation like this, we would take a really long time to vet this information to see what was and wasn't possible. So it's extremely challenging, the position I'd be in when we are here tonight, to be able to effectively answer that question, but we're going to give it a shot. There's so much here that I'm trying to wrap my mind around how to, to address some of the things that come up. So this is going to be a bit of a flow and a conversation, because Mr. Culpepper shared some things, and I took some notes, but want to be able to capture it. So something that we all value, being good stewards of taxpayer dollars. Something that we've shared with you as a staff is that we value our ability to be able to make recommendations based on facts that are available at the given time. And that's what's been presented here. I will, just as a side note, I'm going to step off this one for a little bit. I've, I've been reflecting a lot over the past many weeks of where I have inadequately supported the board's needs. I've gone back, I've looked at goals, I've looked at other things, I've looked at feedback, I've watched videos. inadequately supported the board's needs. I've gone back, I've looked at goals, I've looked at other things, I've looked at feedback, I've watched videos, and haven't seen anything that said, "Go change what we're planning for high schools," and don't come back with a number that says that this is what inflation says is occurring. So don't include that in the CIP. The recommendation that we have before you is based on the best factual evidence that we have that's related to the cost of the projects. And just by changing the cost of the project in here, that, and I don't think this is what's being asked. So this is what I'm trying to figure out and get guidance, because it's essentially saying, "Let's ignore what the inflation numbers suggest, and let's use last year's money." And I don't think that's what's being asked, and I also don't know to what end. What happens between this year and next year to account for that? The one thing that we have heard loud and clear is that we believe the feedback that we've gotten, although it hasn't been from the school board giving a formal guidance or recommendation, is that we think the square footage for our high schools is too big. And I think what you heard, I think what we heard from you is, yes, we see the facts and the foundation that you built those recommendations on, but we believe that situations have changed, and we'd like to update those things. And that's why we've included in the project sheets for the two high schools the intention to develop the facts to be able to pare those down as part of the design process. So I guess one of the basic questions, and so I'll go back to Mr. Culpepper, because he was one that made the motion, is what's the purpose that we're trying, what's trying to be solved by using the previous total project cost for those three projects in this current year's budget?
Yeah, well, as I said a moment ago, when I brought it up, one of the number, the two things that concern me are, one, the gap between available funds and cost of projects. And there's only two ways to resolve that. One is to do less, do fewer things. Or two, those things you do, scope them in such a manner to live within your budget. And the other thing that I see is a long-term facility, maintenance, and replacement problem that is that is obviously unsustainable. We're falling behind, and we're falling behind more rapidly every year. And again, the only way to fix that problem is either to scope the projects in such a way that you can do them and keep up, or, I don't know, find a money tree. So in partial answer to your question here, too, is, like I said, now, I'm not under any illusion that you could do something for nothing. My primary goal here is twofold. One is to call it a forcing mechanism, if you will, to scope the projects within our budget. And two, to have the next, we're going to talk about this again, because we have to approve a project. And I would prefer that the starting point of that next discussion be a more conservative number.
Okay, so let me start with the gap between funding and the projects that are in the CIP. So again, the CIP, as we've talked about, is for designed around individual projects. And it's in order to create a funding line and appropriations that ultimately, when you get to the to the point where you have enough money in appropriations where you can go out and begin to execute that individual project. So it is natural in that to start to fund a project over time and have the remaining funding that is required to be outside of the six-year window. So all that means is that that happens all the time. If you're going to buy a building, it's going to take more than six years to be able to put funding into a building. So there is no gap in what funding is available and our ability to fund, because you just keep funding it until you have the money available. And then at that point in time, you begin the construction. So as far as solving a problem between gap and funding, that doesn't appear to be a factor here. So I'm going to pause to see if there's any give and take before I move on to the next one.
Well, I would actually, because I believe it's still my question. So to avoid a future bait and switch. So again, there's been some confusion about why one slide is different than the other, but that was explained because, you know, we have to account for the cost of inflation. So to avoid any future bait and switch and saying, okay, well, we're going to say that we're going to use last year's numbers, but they're not really realistic, but we can go ahead and tell the public that we're going to use those numbers in future estimates and just hope that we can figure out a way to make that happen. And I think that would actually be more detrimental to our reputation personally. But I think that it's important to understand, what design is it that you're, when you're putting these estimates of the cost of these these rebuilds or renovations, or I think it's important to understand, how are you deriving this estimate? Are you using an old prior model of the same school? How do you derive that estimate? So the public can understand exactly what you're using as a basis to put together that estimate.
Yeah, so, and this is what we covered in a previous board meeting, which had slides, but we don't have those slides to be able to repeat. So for the high schools, they're based on educational specifications. Those educational specifications were done in the two thousand seven, two thousand eight. We had DeYoung and HBA that participated in that and led a substantial effort to say, all right, well, based on what we're projecting for high schools' design needs in the future, we're going to, this is what we recommend. And that ultimately can be broken down into square footage. It was two thousand seven. So it was, the reason why two thousand seven is because that was close in time to when they were doing a master plan, and they saw the number of, and when I say they, it was we in the past. Our staff and our elected officials saw that, hey, we're going to be looking at a lot of high schools coming up. Why don't we develop a good plan for high schools? Well, we all know in two thousand eight, that's when the money that had previously been designated for schools as lottery funds was now moved into the general fund. And there was no accounting for any sort of financial support for school constructions moving forward. So essentially, we were looking to do in Princeton High School, they were ready to do Princeton High School back in that timeframe, and they were planning for it. We're now trying to get it mid twenties to be able to complete that. And that's, that's why that developed how it is, and that's what these numbers, this has been a project for a very long time in the CIP. And it has not been adjusted. Those numbers validate to what is in there. Now, that being said, it's a fair question of, can't we make it smaller? And we talked last week about, hey, we've got some schools that were in Henrico that they have done it smaller, and there are potentially things that we can use. Some of them might be, and again, this, we need to see what we value. So for example, a gym, that might be an easy question of, hey, can we reduce the size of a gym? It might be, but we may also have the conversation for, because now we're talking about Bayside High School, Princeton and Bayside High School, do we really want that smaller gym? Or do we want that space to be available for community use? Do we want that to be a hub of some other thing? Do we need to account for requests from the city that that needs to be bigger based on their needs, based on shelters? All that stuff needs to be in there. But those are fair questions that we need to be able to work through. Some of them, a little bit more, it's interesting, the classroom concept that they have, that they said, hey, we really pared that down, and you need a really good master scheduler to make sure that you can do this. That's intriguing. So there are opportunities to update that moving forward, and that can be done as part of the design process.
Correct. So basically, what you're saying, historically, we used a master specific, or certain specifications for high schools that were derived over, you know, over ten years ago, let's just say that. And then, so right now, but of course, back then, we were looking at having the continual use of those lottery funds, which stopped, which is the reason why we're in the situation we are right now. So as we move forward as a board and future boards, they can take a look at the design of that particular need of the school then. But right now, we are basing it off of a two thousand eight recommendation for the specifications for high schools. And that's how we're deriving these numbers. They're not just put together willy-nilly. We're just, you know, but as we move forward as a board and future boards, we're going to have the opportunity to really look at the use of the future needs of schools at that point, right? But that's, I just want people to understand what, how we bring these numbers together, and that these are just estimates for right now, based on an old model, so to speak. But, you know, as we move forward, we're going to have the ability to be able to work with the future needs of students and the buildings. So, thank you. That's, did you have a chance to finish?
So there was a second part of that, and I fully understand this is your question, but getting clarification from the, what's trying to be resolved with the substitute motion, if I understand that right. And it was the long-term plan is unsustainable. And Mr. Culpepper, I think you talked about the fact that the buildings, if you look at the bottom of page fourteen, that we're getting from ninety-one up to one hundred and thirty-nine years old for our buildings by the time they get replaced based on the current projected funding against current replacement. Is that right, Mr. Culpepper?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. So as it relates to our ability to fund and that challenge, I think what's being suggested is if we just built buildings more efficiently, that we would be able to do it with the money that we're being allocated. Is that the suggestion? I think that might be from Mr. Culpepper or anybody else.
I was about to ask, because that question for me, no, that's not what I, that's not what I said. Mostly what I said was scope, scope and size.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
Scope and size. But inherent in that question seems to be that if we, if we're able to scope everything down and still have an adequate building, that we can still, that we can prevent this process of only being able to replace buildings between ninety-one and one hundred and thirty-nine years old. Because if we say that that's what we're, that we're going to do, that, hey, let's take some time to scope it down so that we can solve this problem of our buildings aren't quite as old, because we save money, right? By making the building smaller, so we should be able to build things sooner. Is that the suggestion?
If you ask me, Jack, that certainly is a way to skin that cat.
Right. So if, and I appreciate that's a way to skin the cat. So this goes back to the basic problem of level funding in an inflationary environment. And when I say inflationary environment, we're always in an inflationary environment. It ebbs and flows, but there's always going to be inflation, always. There can be deflation. It is possible for it to happen, but that's not a typical environment that we live in and that we're going to plan for. So that being said, I haven't crunched the numbers. I like crunching numbers. I don't feel like there's any way that we, if we continue at sixty million dollars between now and the year twenty-one hundred, that we're going to be able to shave enough savings out of our schools to be able to change the replacement cycle. The biggest factor that we are challenged with is that our funding is not going up and inflation is. It's a math problem. One of the questions that I've been asking myself over time is, what are we doing to advocate for the biggest problem that we're faced with, which is the funding problem? That's the problem that we face. We are going to be the best planners and advocates to being the best stewards of taxpayers' money. Are the plans that we have perfect? No. But we're working towards that goal. We have a plan to be able to design in a way that is in line with our current interests and to be able to capture those savings. It's not going to be as much as I would want it to be at five hundred and seventy-five dollars a square foot. And that's if we are able to get to Princeton High School in the timing that we have. At five hundred and seventy-five dollars a square foot, if we're able to get to it, that's going to be the saving. So every ten thousand square feet, you can do the math. If you push that back, I don't have the chart in front of me, so just move it one year. Now you're not at five seventy-five, you're at six something a square foot. So just by pushing it a year to say, hey, we know that we've got a process, push it another year and then save money, you've already spent a certain amount of money. So you can, I don't know what the difference is. Again, it's math. You just do the, it's, I think we're on the, by that point, we're in the six percent range for that, for when we're going to need it. Six percent times the increase in the square footage, and that's what it costs just to wait. The significance of that is because the funding is not going up. If the funding were going up, it wouldn't be as much of a difference, but the funding's not going up. So as far as being good stewards of taxpayers' dollars, not to acknowledge that inflation is real and that we have the best available information that we have, and that's what's been presented to you. I don't believe that's in our best interest to, to signal to our taxpayers that we're not accounting for inflation that we have shared and is the best available information. So, and you can argue about whether it's six percent or something else, but it's something. And I would strongly advocate to to not go in a direction that does not account for a inflationary factor. And unfortunately, the position with the lack of increase in funding is every year something gets delayed, it is losing our value. So I'm sorry, I went long.
No, thank you. I appreciate it. That's a lot to have to discuss without all of the things in front of you and to be asked a question like that right now. So I'm going to ask Ms. Martin, she asked to speak. So Ms. Martin.
Thank you. So, Madam Chair, I take exception to this motion because what it does is it penalizes our most underserved neighborhoods, District Four, Nine, and Ten, that feed into Bayside, Princeton, and Betty F. Williams by reducing the size of schools through appropriations, rather than through a design process, rather than through the educational specifications that were worked on. And so we know that the size of a school can affect safety, security, and educational outcomes, depending on the amenities in that school. And those neighborhoods deserve the same type of school that has been built in other neighborhoods. And so reducing the size or amenities of a school through reducing the appropriation is unacceptable for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Ms. Owens.
Thank you. Ms. Martin stole some of my thunder there, so I will go ahead and just say I thoroughly agree with Ms. Martin. Additionally, I'm disappointed that this substitute resolution was proposed kind of last minute here during the meeting, though we've been working on these issues for the last five-plus weeks. Even, and I understand that sometimes things come up, things change, but even having it emailed to the board a day or two in advance would have allowed time for questions and for admin to be prepared for the questions that we would have had. I can't support it, obviously, both for the reasons that Ms. Martin said. And also, I don't think it's the responsible thing for us to do as elected officials to change it when we haven't had the opportunity to fully vet what that would do as far as outcomes. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Owens. Ms. Melnick.
Thank you. And they both said what I was going to say, but I will just.
You're cutting in and out, and I don't know why.
Okay, how about now?
That's better.
Okay. Then I'll be short and sweet. I agree with Ms. Martin and Ms. Owens. And honestly, it would be reckless on our part to deny the inflationary impact that exists in everything that we do. That, this is reckless, and this is not fair to the public to spring a a motion like this in the eleventh hour. And I thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Melnick. Ms. Brown.
Okay, so I want to put this out there for transparency purposes. I'm very, very conflicted about the CIP. I do appreciate the updates to the project sheets. It makes me feel a little bit better about it, but I'm concerned it's a false sense of security. You know, I'm so I thought that the numbers from before, for last year, maybe roughly four hundred and thirty million, four hundred and thirty million dollars. I felt like that was a little hot. I felt like that was a little high last year. And I hear what you're saying about the scope and scale of it. The thing is, is that the dollars that are going into the CIP with Mr. Culpepper's recommendations don't change. So, we're still earmarking the money for CIP, correct? We're just using last year's numbers. So, anyway, I'm very conflicted right now. I recognize that the buildings do cost money. I understand that we need to build new buildings. I recognize they have a lifespan. None of these schools actually do feed in. District 10 does not feed into any of these schools in the discussion. In fact, the soonest any school is going to be impacted that District 10 feeds into is in 2045, I believe. So, I just thought that was worth mentioning. And again, I am concerned that we're at a point where we're going to be going back to... If we keep going this way, we're going to be going back to City Council and asking for more money. And I wouldn't be able to support asking an underserved community like District 10 to fund buildings that I feel like our projections are based off of outdated specifications. And again, I know that we're going back. So, anyway, I just... I'm still very conflicted. I have really a knot in my stomach about $714 million. And I think that, you know, the taxpayers would want me to have knots in my stomach over that type of cost. But I just... I wanted to just mention that I have no problems with building the schools. I have no problems with the projects to support the schools. But these numbers are very hard to swallow. So, that's all I have to say for now.
Mr. Callen.
Mr. Freeman. In your presentation, you've made it pretty obvious that we've got a funding problem. I don't know how to phrase this next question or frame it, but from your perspective, as you look ahead, what do you see as the changes that need to take place from a funding perspective to solve our problem?
I don't think that's in the scope of my authority, because then we're starting to talk about state elected officials and funding sources.
Then Dr. Spencer's.
Yeah. So, I think, Mr. Callen, it's a fair question. I think it really involves a deeper discussion about this. And I would say there needs to be opportunity for this discussion between the school board itself and its funding goals for the CIP, which would naturally lead to a needed conversation between the school board and City Council on those goals and ways to attain that. And then, if necessary, conversations through advocacy with the delegation at the state level about state funding for school construction, which is woefully inadequate, as we've said a few times, essentially non-existent at this point. And, you know, I mean, there are lots of things that you can talk about in that conversation. But, you know, you have to... You start with where do the funding sources come from? You know, and so, you can get it from state dollars. There's some potential. Ms. Martin was indicating, you know, there's some conversations happening at the federal level around infrastructure and whether or not schools are part of that conversation. Right now, they don't seem to be, but doesn't mean they wouldn't always be. Candidly, this division, Crystal, do you remember the last time this division had a conversation about a bond referendum for schools? Certainly prior to my time here.
It has been quite a number of years. And in fact, I think one of the last things I can recall, and this is probably 10 years ago, we did do some state literacy funding bond through the state where we actually could go in and ask for them to... We still have to go to the city to issue debt, but it's really where we get funding. And this is back in recession time, like College Park Elementary was involved in it. And so, it wasn't really a bond referendum, but that was the last time we've had those discussions that I can recall.
So, you know, to the point. So, that's another significant funding mechanism for school construction that's utilized across the state and across the country that doesn't get discussed here in Virginia Beach often, if ever. There's very good reasons for that. I think there's a lot of people who understand that a bond referendum equals a tax increase. That's what the Stormwater Bond referendum was all about. And so, anyway, I think it just merits further discussion for the board to have a conversation about what are your funding goals for the CIP? We did a presentation on funding, I want to say last year, during the CIP conversation, where we said what it would look like if it was $80 million. In fact, if you look at the Long Range Facilities Plan, we're still trying to get a link working for you. The... There are some, here's what you could do if you had $80 million a year. Here's what you could do at $60 million. Here's what you can do. And it actually lays out the differences in what you can construct in a given timeframe based on different levels of funding. And so, I think it would be good conversation for us to reengage in around, are there specific funding goals that would help us meet the kind of desired timeframes for building schools, and how can we go about working through those, you know, getting to those goals?
Well, since that seems to be the crux of the problem, I would suggest that we pursue that suggestion.
Yeah. So, I sent a note to Dr. Robertson. We'll follow back with leadership about when we might be able to have that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your question, Mr. Callen. Any more discussion before we take this vote? This amendment, substitute motion. Ms. Williams, did you want to talk first? Okay.
Thank you. So, Mr. Freeman, so we'll call them last year's numbers or the PPA numbers, which was about $438 million, correct?
$428.
$428, I'm sorry. Were those... Was inflation accounted into that number when the year before we started doing these numbers?
I believe that was a 3% inflationary factor that in, but applied to those over time. And we then went out and studied to do more further detail.
Okay. So, those had inflation built in there. Okay. And I'm assuming if those numbers would have come out differently, like $350 million or $650 million last year, the PPA would reflect those same numbers, correct? Whatever number it was, or...
No. The way that the PPA is designed, so it's an unsolicited PPA. So, it was submitted under certain... With certain conditions associated with it, and that's how it was evaluated. So, it was presented as, at the time, the $428 as part of the PPA, but knowing that that ultimately gets resolved as part of the comprehensive agreement.
Right. Knowing that that would be the cost with inflation for those three buildings. I mean, the estimate, pretty much.
That's where it would be accounted for, to get to the guaranteed maximum price. And that's why we say we think we're confident it's going to be more than the $428, if it gets that far. We just don't know how much.
Okay. And regardless of the numbers that we use tonight, whether regardless of Mr. Culpepper's substitute resolution or not, it will not change the year-one column in this chart right here, correct? The year-one column that everybody has on their desk. The one that you got today, the year-one column, regardless of Mr. Culpepper's resolution that in his opinion and in some of our opinions, might be an inflated number, but maybe not quite as inflated, or it might not be an inflated number, but it's not as inflated as 700-something million. Regardless of whatever, this column one, which is this year's funding of what we're going to put in there, $23 million into Princess Anne. I'll just do the big Betty F., $2 million. Bayside High School, $1.5 million. That will not change. Is that a correct statement?
So, you said 23. You're saying that year-one funding would remain the same at 23. If we just changed the six-year appropriation number for Prince Anne High School to reflect the previous year, which is $162, keep year-one funding, and then adjust years two, three, four, five to reflect what the $162 number would be for Prince Anne High School as an example?
Yes. I'm saying year-one still gets done. Correct. That is a correct statement.
Year-one could remain at $23,300.
Yes. Thank you. Ms. Ingram is shaking yes, so I'm assuming that's a yes. Okay. Yeah. I mean, I think we have got to build new schools. I think the funding, capital improvement funding, we do need to look at it legislatively. But I know that these costs are so inflated and I... And I just wish that we would go to a more reasonable number. But we have to... My point is, regardless of anything, year-one, before we revisit and re-vote again next year, year-one will be done, and we are moving forward with building these three buildings. Thank you.
I think what we're talking about is what's the consequence related to that, if I understand that correctly. Is that right?
I wasn't. No. I was just making sure that... I was making sure that year-one is going to be done, whether we're talking about $438 million, or $738 million, or $520 million, or $600 million. Year-one is going to get done. That was my point I was making.
Yes. Here are the factors that need to be considered. So, what it does affect is it affects... And I see what your sense is, is that year-one is the only year that's important moving out. I don't know that.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Okay. So, by changing the out-years, because that's how we plan on when we're going to do things. So, for example, if something did not go well for the interim agreement, and we needed to proceed with a design bid build, realistically and fairly, that's probably going to match up with the CIP next year. I don't know that for a fact, but a question I have in my mind is if that did not happen, and we chose that, you know what, this doesn't make sense. We see it. Doesn't make sense to move forward. Let's call it. What that adjusts our timing for when we begin the process for a design bid build. So, there are, again, answering this question up here where it's just me, without the tremendous staff that supports what the consequences are for these kind of things, it's problematic. I don't know that we're going to be able to give you a great answer on what the consequences are. Certainly, your comment about the what happens in year-one seems intuitive, but often with these things, it's really a good idea for staff to be able to dig into these challenges and see what the consequences are, much like we did with the email that came out last week of what would be the consequence of moving this school from here to here to have a little bit of time to be able to work through.
Okay. Well, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but that's not what I asked. And I did ask this exact same question of Ms. Ingram on the phone. So, yeah, you took it further, but I just was talking about year-one. So, I wasn't trying to put you on the spot. So, I just want... Yeah.
Well, I understand that. What I'm saying is there may be more consequences that go beyond just that. And I think what I was asked originally with this is what's the consequence of putting the old numbers into those three projects? And I thought that was the context of what we're talking about right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Anderson, and then you, Ms. Franklin.
I too feel that it's irresponsible to ignore inflation. And but also, I just want to say that I feel like bringing this substitute motion forward at the last minute is unacceptable. And because we've had five weeks of discussion about this, and I just feel like we're being blindsided by bringing something up at the last minute like this. I agree with Ms. Martin also in her comments, and I'd like to remind our colleagues that we should not... We should bring up whether... We should not bring up whether a school is in our district or not, because the entire city pays for all schools. So, we shouldn't base our decision on whether or not it happens to be in our district. And so, I just want to point that out to colleagues. But most of all, you know, I will not be supporting this substitute motion because I do feel, as I said before, it's very irresponsible to totally ignore inflation. I just don't think that's wise for us to do. I hope my colleagues will vote against this substitute motion.
Thank you. Ms. Franklin.
Okay. And first of all, Mr. Culpepper, I certainly appreciate you're looking at trying to be a good steward of taxpayer dollars. I mean, I'm not afraid to admit that I use coupons any opportunity I can to save money. And so, you know, but I think that one thing that I just want to just mention is that we oftentimes, as a board, and I think all colleagues can agree to this, we get so much information presented to us, we're going to forget in the future conversation why we... Why the number... Why we decided to go with this number and kind of hold our feet to the fire. And I can just tell you, in my personal line of work, you know, we always under-promise and over-deliver. That's our goal, because people are going to remember, if you give them one set of numbers, they're going to remember the lowest set of numbers. They just are. That is human nature. You're going to want to remember the best-case scenario, the lowest set of numbers, and then you're going to hold our feet to the fire for that. And I think that it's virtually impossible for Mr. Freeman and Ms. Ingram tonight to say that we're going to be able to realistically provide that number for last year's budget and be able to realistically make sure that we can account for that number and stay within that number, especially with the cost of inflation and everything else. So, I just, for right now, I cannot vote for the substitute motion, just simply because I feel like that would not be a good, realistic figure to be able to stick with in terms of moving forward. And I get that it doesn't really change the resolution in front of us in terms of that bottom line. But I just feel like that is what is going to be remembered, when that number is what is going to be remembered when we go into future projects and future discussions about this, and we're going to forget why that number came about. And then, we're going to have to reevaluate all of this all over again. So, for right now, I think I'm just going to say that I'm not going to vote for the substitute motion. And I do appreciate you bringing it in front of us. I just wanted to explain why I couldn't do it. Thank you.
Ms. Manning.
Thank you. So, I just want to give my input. I've already made a lot of statements on my view in the workshop, so I'm just going to summarize that briefly. You know, the numbers in the CIP for the three schools, Princess Anne High School, Bayside High School, and Betty F. Williams, the numbers that are currently approved from last year's CIP compared to the numbers on this year's CIP, I just want to point out, have increased 66%. We vote on the CIP every year, so we can adjust these numbers annually if we need to increase them. I think that it's more appropriate to vote on a lower number in anticipation of the fact that we can increase those numbers in future years. I do want to also note, and I think Ms. Williams brought this up, the numbers in the PPA are the same exact numbers of what was approved in the CIP. So, obviously, the developer, the contractor, is using those numbers. So, they're seeing those numbers that we approve in that CIP, and they're saying, okay, this is what the school board will pay. So, when we're approving these numbers, that's what's seen. I would like to address the comment of last-minute substitute resolution. This isn't a last minute. We couldn't present... We didn't have a vote before. But this is something that we have talked about for the last month and a half. I've certainly shared my concerns about these costs at every meeting. So, I don't think this is a last-minute topic that we've been discussing. And then, finally, I just want to address the district issue. In the new voting system, we do represent districts. I don't represent a district right now. I'm still at large. But we do have board members who represent districts, where they're only voted on by the people that live in their district. So, under this new voting system, I do believe it's very appropriate to talk about our constituents in our own districts in order to look out for their best interest. Thank you.
Ms. Melnick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to remind my colleagues that we cannot make changes that people are talking about. We cannot be... We cannot change our footprint... We cannot be, we cannot change our footprint with buildings until those buildings have been designed. It just can't happen otherwise. So we're doing things the right way, and we can change our footprint. We can, we can value engineer, we can look for efficiencies after we have those plans. And until then, that just cannot be done. Thank you.
Okay. There's no one else in the queue. So I'm going to call the motion that Mr. Culpepper has made, the substitute motion.
Could I hear it one more time? Could I hear the motion one more time?
Mr. Culpepper, please say it one more time.
Oh, gosh. My motion is to substitute the PPA numbers, which are identical to the CIP numbers from last year and to this year's CIP for three projects, Princess Anne High School, Betty F. Williams, and Bayside High Schools.
I'm confused. This is not about the PPA. This is about the CIP plan. Could you restate that motion, please?
I move to substitute the numbers offered as the total for the, these three schools, Princess Anne High School, Betty F. Williams, and Bayside High School. The numbers that were proposed in the PPA that are identical to the CIP approved from last year into this year's CIP.
Okay, so I'm going to call for a vote. All of those that agree are going to vote for the substitute motion that Mr. Culpepper presented, please raise your hand.
Ms. Melnick, how do you vote?
I vote nay.
Ms. Manning, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Owens, how do you vote?
Nay.
Mr. Culpepper, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Now we have to take a vote on all opposed.
Yeah, all opposed to the proposed substitute motion that Mr. Culpepper presented, please raise your hand.
Okay, Madam Chair, we have four ayes and seven nays. The substitute motion did not pass.
Okay, thank you. So without further discussion, I'm going to ask Mrs. Anderson to read the resolution in front of us today.
Thank you. Whereas the mission of Virginia Beach City Public Schools in partnership with the entire community is to empower every student to become a lifelong learner who is a responsible, productive, and engaged citizen within the global community. And whereas the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach has adopted a comprehensive strategic plan and school improvement priorities to guide budgetary decisions. And whereas the primary funding sources for the capital improvement program, known as CIP, are charter bonds, public facility revenue bonds, and reversion funding. And whereas the city school revenue sharing policy provides 46.75% of certain general fund revenues to meet obligations of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach. And whereas the city school revenue sharing policy allocates funds first to debt service while the balance is used for the operating budget and the CIP. And whereas $2 million will be allocated to schools Pay As You Go, known as PAGO, for the CIP. Whereas the School Board has comprehensively reviewed all sources of funding, projected various scenarios, and prioritized the needs of the operating and CIP budgets. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach adopts a CIP program of $735,426,061, as shown on the attached School Board Funding Summary and Project Summary Alternative A dated March 7, 2023. And be it finally resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this School Board, and the clerk of the School Board is directed to deliver a copy of this resolution to the mayor, each member of the City Council, the city manager, and the city clerk adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach this 7th day of March, 2023.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Now I call for a vote to approve this resolution for the capital improvement program for fiscal year 2023-24 through fiscal year 2028-29, as presented. All in favor, please raise your hands.
We, when we had the original motion, it was on Ms. Morton and Ms. Franklin.
So this is just for the vote. We already made a motion, seconded, okay? So all that are in favor, please raise your hands.
Ms. Melnick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Manning, how do you vote?
Nay.
Ms. Owens, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Culpepper, how do you vote?
Nay.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you can call the nay votes.
All that are not for this resolution and want to vote against it, please raise your hand.
Okay, Madam Chair, we have seven ayes in favor of the resolution and four nays, so the resolution did pass.
Thank you. I call this meeting to adjournment.